...order and we're going to be led by our prayer and our pledge tonight by Mr. Brinkley.
Stand with me, please. Good Lord, we thank you for another opportunity to get together. God, we ask that as we face a lot of big decisions in the near future that you'll guide us. We'll seek your wisdom. We'll collaborate as a body. We'll have the best interest of our community, our county, our taxpayers, and our citizens in mind. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Welcome to the county council. We'll start with our roll call, please.
Brinkley, Caddell, Hicks, Kitz, Lemming, McQuarrie, Scott.
All right. Next on our agenda, we have auditor's report.
I have nothing to report, but if you have any questions, I'm here.
All right. New business, Grant County EMS.
Evening.
Got my letter request. Is there any question regarding it?
I guess the additional appropriations, was that just not properly funded in the budget?
Yeah, it's the same thing we talked about at budget time. I was funded for 70 hours for our full-time people and they're scheduled for 72 and on average, they work 75.
Hopefully, we have that resolved for next week.
Exactly. Yep. Yep, I do recall that.
I do have that money to transfer. I didn't replace myself when I took the director's position last year. And I did take a part-time person and changed them to full-time, but then I eliminated a full-time position this year that I did not replace. So that's why I've got that extra money in there.
Okay.
That won't be around next year, but this year I've got it.
Okay. All right. So the chair would entertain a motion. We can do it as one with the additional appropriation and the transfer appropriation, or do them separate, whatever anybody would like to do.
Mr. President, I move to approve Grant County EMS request for additional appropriation and transfer as presented.
All right. Second. Thank you, Mr. Scott. And I'm second by Mr. Brinkley. Do you have any questions or comments from the council? Any questions or comments from the public regarding that? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have Grant County Highway, David White.
Good evening. What I'd like to do is, one, we have a truck driver's position come open about a week or so ago. I'd like to fill that. And currently, I have two road foreman's positions. One gentleman left the highway department, so I'd like to take his position and move it back down to a truck driver's position since I've got a new highway superintendent assistant. He's taken some of the load off of the foreman, so I think I'd probably need a couple more guys in trucks working out on the roadways, doing more of that. So that's what I'd like to do with that position. So get it go back to a truck driver's position, which would save a little bit more money compared to what the road foreman got paid.
Okay.
You can be looking to fill those as soon as you can, I assume, right?
Yes, yes, yes. I'd like to get somebody in every foreman for sure.
The chair would entertain a motion regarding the salary ordinance amendment as well as the replacement of vacancy.
I would move that we approve both the salary ordinance amendment and the replacement of vacancies, actually two of those.
All right. Second, Mr. McQuarrie. Thank you, Mr. Caddell. Second, any questions or discussion among the council? Anything from the public? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have Grant County Pope's Defender, Mr. Bruce Elliott.
Good evening, gentlemen. We had filed our letter requesting two matters. The first matter, we have, I've discussed, we're going to withdraw that. That was a request to transfer $3,500 from the supplement account. I need to speak with the auditor about that and perfect how we're going to do that, so I may be back in front of you next month on that. The second request is for a new trial PD. We have a couple of open positions. We do have a young man who has just recently passed the bar. He is working both in Madison County and he will be working here locally. His name is Justin McKenzie. We've spoken with him. We are pleased that he would like to accept a position here in Grant County with us as a trial PD. He is a young man, as I indicated, and it'll be good to get some youth and new blood into our organization, as you can tell, Mr. Druck and Mr. Glickfield are getting kind of old myself.
Terrific.
Yeah. I'm hanging in there. But again, we're having, we're struggling again with our numbers and trying to stay in compliance. I think we're in better shape than we were this time last year because of some of the things we've done. This will help us stay in numbers compliance or keep us closer to that. So we're anxious to see if we can offer this young man a job.
Chair would entertain a motion regarding Mr. Elliott's request.
Just as a point clarification for a motion, and that is a salary of $55,000, that's a PD, right? Okay.
That's correct.
All right.
I'm adding in one.
No, it's just filling a vacancy.
And make the motion to add or allow Mr. Elliott to hire someone.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lemming.
I'd second that.
All right. Thank you, Mr. McQuarrie. Any questions or discussion among the council?
So the one unfilled or make him from the change that we made.
Correct, ma'am.
Correct. Any questions from the public? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Elliott.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda, we have Grant County Sheriff, Mr. Darcia.
Good evening, Mr. President, member of the council. Mr. President, I just wondered if you were able to add that reference or conversation on the vacancy replacement?
Yes. Yep, we can.
Well, today, this evening, I'm not coming for any additional money. I know you guys would be glad to hear that, but we do need to transfer some money from salaries to special deputy salary and to merit board salary so that we can eat that payroll and that'll just be transferred from our salaries to those accounts. And then we have one position that is becoming, will be vacant effective Friday. We had a detective after 21 years, she decided to retire, so we already have someone to our merit list that will be taking her spot. We appreciate everything, Sergeant Aaron Petrow, down for the Grant County Sheriff's Office and for the citizens of Grant County. She just felt it was time for her to retire and spend more time with her family and not get caught in the evening, so we're looking to replace her position.
I have one question on the salary transfer of $60,000. We're transferring from salary to the special deputies, and that's for courthouse security, right?
Yes.
That's a substantial amount of additional based on what the original budget was. I guess I'm a little surprised that much. Is there a reason we're going that much higher than what the?
We just want to make sure we're going to have enough. We've had some different things going on, where we've had to hire a few more people to get them over there to cover courts. We've had extra because of higher, anytime there's a higher level felony that's being tried, the court or the judges request additional special deputies to be in the courtroom where murder trials and things of that nature. So we just want to make sure we have enough to cover for the rest.
Okay. Well, I noticed the increase is 26.5% of the original budget, so it's substantial, but it's because of other things happening above what was expected?
Yeah. Anytime we, anytime we have a murder trial, in fact, we just had one just recently, or there's just recently a murder trial, they're always requesting extra personnel, so we're having to put extra people in those positions. And I don't know that we're going to need all 60,000 of it, so we're hoping to be able to probably return the majority of it. And then we're short on merit board.
That's a small one.
Yeah, it wouldn't be too big.
Yeah, it wouldn't be too big. That one's pretty big.
Right. I understand.
Chair would entertain a motion regarding the transfer of appropriation as well as the deputy for the retiree replacement.
Are you, okay, you'd like to motion for all three?
Yes, please.
I would move that we fill out the transfers and the hiring to replace the retired deputy.
Thank you, Mr. Brinkley. Do we have a second? All right. Thank you, Mr. Hicks. We have motion and a second. Any other questions or comments from the council? Anything from the public? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have Grant County Community Corrections. As I look on my agenda, it's kind of, I think it's misspelled.
It is, sorry.
Yeah. Minor. Oh, there you are.
Yeah, there I am. So I decided not to clear the council chambers by coming in there today. I am, I got a bad cold and a cough, and I know how health-conscious David is, so I didn't want him, didn't want to scare him. So I'm coming to you today virtually. If you put your ear to the window, you could probably hear me coughing. I'm over in my office across the street. Anyway, I'm here before you today to talk to you about filling a grant-funded position for our secretary's position. The current salary for this position is 38,115, and our hope is to fill this position. We have a current part-time person that is very skilled in reading our GPS and doing our secretarial duties, and so we'd like to be able to fill that position with her, with hopefully a start date as soon as possible with the 20th, I thought. Angie might be able to do that for us since she's already on our payroll, so. And I'll entertain any questions you might have.
My question is, what grant fund is involved?
It's the Community Corrections Grant Fund, which is 9101.
Thank you.
Uh huh.
Do you feel like it'll be renewed, I guess?
Yes.
That would be.
We'll, we already have made the cuts already that were necessary for '26, so this will fill that budgetary need. We'll see what happens based upon what you've been able to see in, we'll see what happens in 2027, but I think we'll be able to maintain this position. We will also seek to hire another part-time person because our numbers are really escalating, so.
Chair would entertain a motion regarding the placement of this vacancy for the Corrections Fund 9101.
Mr. President, I would like to motion to accept the presentation, Mr. Cunningham.
Thank you, Mr. Lemming. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Any questions or comments from the council? Anything from the public? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And thank you, Mr. Cunningham, for thinking of all of us and staying away while you're ill.
Thank you. You'd like to have a great rest of your evening.
You as well. Next on our agenda, we have Grant County Area Plan, Mr. Todd Blancy.
Hello. Thank you for seeing me, seeing the example. Good news is, I'm not asking for anything, it's not budgeted, I'm not asking for any extra money. It's filling vacancies within the office. So I have a vacant full-time permit clerk position open. I have a part-time permit clerk that is filled and a person, and I'd like to move that person into the full-time position and then be able to hire a part-time permit clerk. And these are all budgeted. Did I make that clear?
Got one of those.
Okay. And then the second item that just came up Monday is my co-enforcement officer position opened up Monday. And so if you would grant me to be able to wiggle back into this agenda item, I'd appreciate it.
Chair would entertain a motion regarding the replacement of those vacancies as Mr. Blancy has just described. Thank you, Mr. Brinkley. Second. Thank you, Mr. Lemming. Questions or comments from the council? Any questions, comments from the public? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next. Yes.
I was going to tell you Kevin Text instead, he's tying up some loose ends down at dispatch and will be here shortly.
Oh, okay. All right. Now, I guess we'll, we have a letter from him in our packet?
We do. There's a letter for a transfer from salaries to overtime.
I didn't see that, I guess, I didn't. Was it there? I didn't have it in my packet, I don't think we're able to see it here.
It's a $30,000 transfer from the Central Dispatch Fund 4922, from salaries to, what did I say, overtime?
Overtime, yeah. You can do it in a second. Next item on our agenda, we'll skip over that and then we'll come back to an ordinance modifying local income tax rates. And this had been an advertised item that we had in the newspaper with a modification for a correctional and rehabilitation facility with a proposed increase in our local income tax rate of 0.2%. And this rate would become effective January 1st, 2026. And it would be related to, I guess, at the end of the day, a jail project, jail-related project. It appears in the notes that I have here that we advertise it in both the Chronicle as well as the News Herald. And it looks like in the Chronicle September 3rd and in the News Herald, August 27th. So with the public hearing, I would open it up to the public for comment regarding this item that we have, which we did have a special meeting last night regarding a potential project. But if you would like to speak, please come to the microphone and state your name and your address and let us know your thoughts.
Yes. And just one comment, you and we talked about what that 0.2 would bring in, and just as a reminder, based on what our numbers will be for 2026, the 0.2 would bring in right at $3 million. It's 2,989, 988. It's right at 3 million. Okay. Of course, that could fluctuate year to year depending on what kind of income tax people pay.
Yes.
Whatever income they earn, I should say, tax income.
Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Ryan Howell. I live at 2909 South Branson Street, Marion, Indiana. And I, I think law enforcement and public safety officials is our number one priority. But with that being said, as a taxpayer, I always wondered, and maybe I speak for other taxpayers of Grant County, why everything's so expensive, why everything runs into the millions, and why we have all these regulations? I know it's, maybe it's the state level, maybe it's a local level, but you know, it's like a county jail costs $50 million, but I just don't understand why we can't just put some Constantia wire up around a gymnasium for some of these people and put some armed guards out there and run into millions, thousands. Maybe, I mean, not only here, but all across the state and the country. Why does everything have to be so very, very, very expensive? But with that being said, I 100% think law enforcement is a number one priority. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would agree, I wish we could deliver it less expensively.
For sure. I concur.
Yes, sir. Good evening, gentlemen. Michael Duke, 5180 East 100 North, Marion, Indiana. I feel compelled to at least get up again and make a couple of comments. Hopefully, they will be a bit coherent. But I attended the part of the council meeting, commissioners meeting joint last night. I was struck by a couple of comments made by different members of the council about, do we really know what we are pursuing, what the root cause is, is compelling the consideration for a new jail facility? How can you go approaching or pursuing a solution to something you don't know exactly what the root cause is? I'm mindful that over the past several months, while this jail committee has been working, that efforts have been made within the judicial and the prosecutor's arena, the probation arena, trying to relieve the caseload and thereby relieve the numbers of inmates that are in the jail. Let me say this first. One of my majors and my backglow degree is criminal justice and corrections. I do know a little bit about what I speak of, although I will admit, I'm dated on being active in the criminal justice system for a few years. But it does come to mind to me that there are facilities in the state and the prison systems that have been there for a long time. I know that we're building, the state's pursuing building any new prisons, but they are now housing inmates in those facilities. They've got to be doing maintenance on in order to keep them secure. Granted, I believe that, like the gentleman said, law enforcement and corrections are very important to our community. But I will say one more thing that I'm mindful of. In the past election cycle, comments were made by different candidates during the debates and the rhetoric of the campaign that said, why do we need a new jail? Or at least that was the illusion of. Why aren't we maintaining what we have? Why do we need to go out and running to pursue a 60 or an 80 or a 120 million dollar project to build a new facility when we've got one right here that if we were maintaining it, would it be good enough? The council members did ask, I think legitimate questions last evening about what can we do to manage these costs and meet the needs of the safety of the public at the same time? I would just ask the council members to keep in mind, as you do your considerations, that there's a balance there. As one taxpayer, I don't know that I can speak for all of them, but taxpayers have a lot of pressure on ourselves. We struggle to meet, make ends meet, and now another 0.2% is being considered to be added into the local income tax. It's not going to be the first tax that you consider here. I'd wager dime to a dollar that in the next several months, you're going to be considering other taxes too. And I come back to my positions, let's, as I've said before, let's increase the tax base of the community through economic development instead of running out and working at raising taxes on the public barge. Thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. Duke.
My name is Phil Creed, 1409 Ironwood in Marion, Indiana. Couple of things. Number one, I want to start off with, I'm 100% in favor of law enforcement and back them 100%. As far as the tax goes, I guess I just want to kind of keep that buffer down that we actually have a idea and we can maintain that because not only are we going to raise it for the county, the city's talking about adopting a local city income tax and we just put a food income tax, food tax in, so you know, it sounds like we're off chasing money for whatever reason. With that being said, I was here yesterday for the whole jail thing and I appreciate you bringing that and making that transparency. But the one thing that I would like to comment on is the fact that we heard from the people that are going to be building the jail, and they established what the baseline is for us. And to me, being in building trades and upper management for a home improvement company, one of the things that when you negotiate is you pretty much establish the one of the things that when you negotiate is you pretty much establish the baseline. So my point is, if you say we're going to spend $60 million, you say, okay, that's what we're going to spend, and you establish what you want in that $60 million. And then you say, can you do that? Because you have to have an incentive for that builder or developer to go out and negotiate down. There was too many contingencies in that for them to be able to say, to give you really what the cost is, and that caveat of, well, we might be able to reduce it. My point is, is not so much about reducing it, is getting what you want for that base price. So if 60 million is what you're going to spend, establish what you want and have them meet that goal or somewhere in between that, and not just say, we're going to bring it down to 60 million by taking this out of it and taking this out of it and taking this out of it. I mean, you could easily get down to that. It just reminds me of a track builder that goes out and says, starting at, you know, you can get this three-bedroom house with two bedrooms, but if you want a driveway, you know, if you want this, it's going to cost you more. Oh, you want an indoor kitchen? Well, you know, it's going to cost you a little more. And I know that's, I'm being sarcastic, but my point is, is maybe reverse, flip the script on this and say, 60 million, this is what we want. We're not looking to go to drive this. We want it to last. Here's the warranties we want. Here's what, here's what we want included in this. And you know, what's the cost of the building going to be to maintain? You know, how much, how much, what is the warranties of all this stuff? How much cost are we going to have in this? That's all, that's all I want to say, is get your bang for your buck and not let nickel and dime and bring this down, this, I, this, do that, do this. This is what we want. This is what we're going to pay. Can you do it? Then we can, we can, we can do business. One thing, if you read The Art of the Deal, you'll know what I'm talking about. Everybody have a good day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Creed. Anyone else from the public?
Hi.
Hello.
My name is Karen Creation at 1409 Ironwood. And I just wanted to say, if you're going to build a new jail, I think absolutely positively you should have a juvenile facility included. I don't believe we should be transporting our juveniles to other counties. You can't protect them that way. We're still responsible for them. I think you're going to suffer up to a lot of liability and there's tariff actions all the time. I just think we should, if we're going to spend the money, really going to do it, and we're going to do it right. And this is the same discussion we had 30, 40 years ago when we left Castle Bartman to build this one. And I was a lot younger then, so I remember it being my mom and daddy going, taxes, taxes, taxes. So it's, it's the same story. If we're going to have to build a jail every 40 years, then we're wasting our time. Let's just fix this one and let it go. If we're really going to sit down and do it, let's do it right. All the support stories came out after this one was built. I don't know how much truth was in it. I was reading it in the Chronicle, and that's always questionable, but they said, well, they didn't have good inspectors when this one was built. And all this poor craftsmanship and stuff came up. As soon as we build this one, you know all electronics are going to be outdated. Our phone right now is outdated. There's a new one they're advertising already. So how are we going to maintain it? If this tax is going to maintain the jail and it's just going to go for this jail, then that'll be a little different. But if this is a 2%, and this is going to be divided among everything else and stuff, then I'm opposed to any type of income tax increase. But if it's going to go directly to law enforcement, and that's where it's going, it's going to be earmarked there, locked in, and it cannot be moved here regardless of who's sitting in these chairs in the future, then I wouldn't be as anti. But if there's any way to avoid it, I prefer to avoid it. Thank you.
Thank you. This tax isn't tied directly to correctional and rehabilitation facility is where it has to go. So just to clarify that. Anyone else from the public have any comments? Yes, I opened it up for council comments regarding this proposed lit at this time.
I guess I would start out by saying, I think we're probably, and of course, we're all here last, well, Mr. Cuddell was not here last night, but I think we're probably a little disappointed that we don't have the final number for the proposed jail project. Yeah, I mean, that's not there. Bottom line is, we're facing this decision tonight without that number. And probably have that until late December, early January. So in my mind, if we feel like we're going to do some kind of a project, whether it be this coming year, two years down the road, whatever it is, it's going to be some time even, putting the tax in place that start having the money accumulated for that project, whatever it becomes, makes sense to me. We may put this in place and not agree on something this January, and maybe we're going to delay it for some time, I don't know. But hopefully, what we can come to a decision on in the winter will include a new facility now, because the sooner we get it, less costly it's going to be. I mean, if we delay, it's going to be more costly down the road. So I guess my, my point to this is, I would say that even though we're not definite of what the project's going to entail, or if it's going to happen this year for sure, it's, I think prudent for us to put the tax in place, to have the revenue coming in, in the event that it is. And if it isn't, we'll have that money on hand for when it does happen. And keep in mind, what we do tonight, under the current legislation, will only last through '26 and '27 because in calendar year '28, income tax structure is going to change. What we do tonight is going to incorporate in our full 1.2% we have as a maximum for county local income tax. So there's that piece also. So this is only going to be really on its own for two years, '26 and '27, if we do it. So that's my, I guess, two cents to initiate the conversation here. We may have other thoughts and comments, too.
Anyone else have thoughts and comments?
I'll follow it out, maybe some discussion if anything, because at least, at least discussion and debate is always, always a good thing. I don't know that we can avoid the lit entirely. Between Senate bills, Senate enacted, one, we are losing revenue dollars. We know, we know we have repairs and maintenance that needs to happen on our facilities, and for good reason. Commissioners gives us a list of, you know, $4 million of repairs that that needs to be done to the existing. We're going to be facing something that's going to hit us in the future at, at some point in time. I struggle immensely with $105 million ask to, to our taxpayers when, as Mr. Duke said, we don't even know what our root problem, what our root cause is. We, we know that we are not, what we do know is we are not constructing a new jail because of the conditions currently in, in our jail. Right now, we're building a new jail because we have more inmates. And we don't have a reason as to why we have more inmates. To address that reason, probably going to take additional dollars through this, through the correctional rehabilitation facility, this local income tax, one way or another. If we maintain the current jail, it's going to take additional dollars that we do not have. If we, if we can, if we repair the D-home and turn that into 92 beds, it's going to take dollars that we don't have. One way or another, I don't think we can avoid the local option income tax, the increase in, in, in the lit. Where we go from there, I think, is vitally important. And we have not tried increasing home detention. We have not tried even, you know, there was talks of moving females to the D-home. Maybe it's a block or a group that goes to the D-home. Those 92 beds, what we do know as well is that we have, we have mental health issues and we have drug addiction issues. I mean, that everybody can see, we can agree on. I think we've explored the thought of those, those 92 beds open up an opportunity to be able to implement treatment programs in the, in those two areas. Just locking somebody up is not going to be the answer. And just opening up a $350 to $400 bed is not going to address our issues and our problems, whatever they may be. So with that being said, I don't know that we can avoid the lit, but I think we can do more to address the issues and the challenges that we have in front of us in regards to the criminal justice system. We cannot continue throwing what we're throwing at the system, because obviously, if we have an increase in jail, we have programs and things in place currently that is not working. Okay? And we need to look inward at this, because if, if they're working, we don't have an increase. You know, what we know is that three years ago, we had a substantial spike, almost 30% in our jail population. Why? And that's the question that I keep going back to. The statistics that's thrown at me does not support an increase of 30% in, in our jail. What is going on to support those numbers? We need to find that out and then determine what our programming needs to be to help these individuals who are struggling on a day-to-day basis. Putting them in jail, locking the key, and moving on is not going to be the answer for several of these individuals. And we have some hardened criminals, and that's going to be the only way we're going to get their attention. But those who are fighting with mental health and those who are fighting with drug addictions need help. And just throwing them, just, I don't think this is the answer for that. And I just wish that somehow over the next few months, that we can come together collectively, look inward at what we're doing, think outside of the box, figure out what direction we need to, we need to go for the people of Grant County. We're losing people all the time. And the commissioners are doing a heck of a job to bring in business and industry and commerce and try to turn this tide. But, but right now, when, when we look, we see a lot of negativity. And building a $105 million jail, I think it's only going to add to that. We need to turn the tide somehow in some way. To me, I think we need to find the dollars that's going to address the issues, the challenges that those who are supporting the criminal justice system, those who are going through the criminal justice system, we need to figure out how we're going to help them. So that's my ramble. Sorry.
All those important things, I guess the concern I would have tonight is, we aren't going to be able to decide when that's going to be tonight. So the question we have to decide is if we're going to start that funding mechanism for future facility use to alleviate those problems. Now, obviously, when we've had a lot of conversation in this body, in the system, where can they be more efficient or do a better job of who we put in jail, who we don't put in jail, and how we help those that need help, so to speak? There's been a lot of conversations, we can't control that here at this table. We can only control what dollars we spend for those purposes, is what we come down to. You mentioned one of the things, and to me, it's not really relevant tonight, I'll mention this, I think in conversation with Mr. Riddlesworth just recently. One thought that came to mind, I said, yeah, what are we going to use the current jail for? If we don't want to use it for prisoners, what are we going to use it for? Not really sure yet. But we're talking about, you know, mental health programs and things to help, you know, drug abusers, mental health needs. Could be that current portion of the detention center that is now with the 46 slash 92 beds, could be that area could be used for that kind of purpose too, without the, not using this old jail facility. So there's some things they could be thinking about as they fine tune, what we can do facility-wise as we move forward. We aren't ready for that yet, I don't think, for a decision. But there are a lot of things in conversation can take place between now and whenever it happens to make it what we want it to be. And one of the people speaking mentioned the juveniles. Yeah, one of my conditions was, if we do a new facility, I want that juvenile piece to be covered. And I don't know yet if it's going to be possible or not based on the number. And, you know, we, not everybody here, but we have as a group given them the permission to move forward with a $60 million price tag as they do the design. Obviously, they haven't been able to incorporate all that we want at that price tag yet, and they may not be able to, I'd say, when it all gets said and done. But it could be because of some things we can do with juvenile purposes, and maybe we can somehow, as this project develops, accomplish, you know, that ensemble. I don't know. But bottom line is, we can't solve that tonight. We need to decide whether or not we're going to move forward with the funding mechanism, put dollars in place for that purpose when, when a project does become decided upon.
Yeah, I would agree. I think last night, it was kind of one of those things where basically, you know, 48 hours ago, we still didn't have a list of exactly what the project was going to be, and it's about 60%, something like that. So we really don't have a hard number on, really what I had hoped to be to tie this directly to a project and have it and know it, but, but we're not there. But we're either going to have to do a project, or we would have to spend dollars to maintain the existing facility that we have. So one way or another, this .2 would get utilized.
Yeah, I think regardless of what we're thinking as far as the numbers of prisoners, we are faced with some kind of a facility need, just because of what's happening in the current facility when it comes to the quality of the, what's there, the cells, the doors, and just things that, I know, we spent money, what, back in '18, thinking that was going to take us longer than it has to use it. But so regardless of the numbers, we still are faced with some facility issues, I think. Now, we've had the concern here of, you know, what number do we build to? We've talked about that. And, you know, obviously, we have to have in mind, as the project is determined, we can only afford so many of those. And we've put with that, the money we're spending on how to, we've got to stop that. That's not going to happen. They're going to be, everybody we incarcerate is going to be here, not there. And I just, last night, the number came up a little bit in the conversation. Right now, it's $1.7 billion that we have budgeted in '26 for Rata County. $1.1 for the adults, $0.6 for the juveniles. So it's 1.7 total. And we've been using that 1.2 number in savings, so we've got some play there.
And I guess the argument to all that scenario, based on whatever that's commented, one of my things is like, we can spend 1.5, let's just mid of the middle, for a long time before you hit $60 million. But I think the problem is, is we don't want to be out in county where all of a sudden the federal government comes in and says, you are building a new jail, and then we, we've lost control. We have to meet whatever they say. And the first person to comment, and I'm with him, about, you're in jail, you shouldn't get some of those things, but all the federal guidelines and things that you have to meet, I mean, that drives the price up. So instead of $100 a square foot, we're looking at, what, $500 a square foot or, or something ridiculous. So I feel like we have to go through the process, and then in January or whatever, then we can really be more involved with commissioners to detail that down and say, we're not comfortable spending that much money, and you're still going to need the money to remake repairs. I don't think that that's going to be unused. I think it's a, I think it's more or less a smart way of doing business. It's just, it's a process, and unfortunately, not everyone's privy to all of the information. It takes time.
Yeah, I think it's important to note that even if the project happened right now, it's still April 2028, so we still have two and a half years we're going to have to maintain that jail.
Yeah, that's where my concern too, because, you know, how long will that current facility last without us replacing it? And we don't know that number, but if you think in five years, maybe? We're getting, the window is closing, that's two and a half years now.
Yeah, that's why I said last night, there was, you know, an independent source, you know, those in the crowd last night, they have a dog in the fight. We're not going to get an honest answer out of them.
Right.
You know, we went from, you know, the D-home wouldn't, wouldn't cost us any more money, and then when the conversation turns to that, that's the direction we're going to look at, and now all of a sudden, it's going to cost extra. You know, so where, where do we go to get an independent source of how, the longevity of that building and proper maintenance? Can we get five years, 10 years? Can we get 20 years? I mean, nobody knows. You know, we, we complain, we can say, well, it's, we may only have five or 10, we may have 20. I mean, it's just, you don't know. You know, and to spend $105 million on something you don't know is a pretty big, it's a pretty big risk.
Yeah, and Mike, you throw that 105, and it's true, the long term, as we make all the payments, that's what it would come down to, if we did finance 60. But keep in mind, 60 million principal and then the interest. So just make sure we state that in terms of we aren't, it's 105 million.
105 million.
Principal, it's 60 million principal and then interest, then interest.
Okay, there's.
When I buy, when I buy my truck for $50,000, it doesn't cost me $50,000.
I know, but how people see that, it makes a difference. It's going to cost you that in the long run.
If you pay cash.
If you pay cash, it's only going to cost us 60 if we pay cash. We don't have cash.
I'll end up doing a plug here for Ford and Lincoln Mercury, but I did see an ad that Ford is doing 0% right now on a Lincoln.
Let's go.
For how long?
Five years.
That's a long time, that's a long time.
That's when Will can really cost.
We are going to get that deal.
Somebody can get a 50 million. I don't think the five years, we can do 3 million payments.
But you know the term no free lunch? Somehow they're making that back, or they feel like they can't sell it unless they do that, I guess.
There you go, that's right. One way or another.
I want to acknowledge what you said, because you could have any number of people come into this facility and give you their opinion. All it is is opinion. And when you have a facility that's overcrowded like we do, it's been overcrowded for so long. It's like a hog barn, it's overcrowded with big fat hogs. You have so much wear and tear. You know, if we were at what we were supposed to be at, that number, I think you would see a lot less wear and tear on the current facility. But we have an enormous amount of inmates over there. So that's, that has to be factored into that as well. And you brought up an interesting point, that's very well spoken as far as, this is what we want, this is what we want you to include. That's good information. And the only, you know, I've told multiple people, I'm so tired of every time we need something, we have to raise taxes. Because we, as taxpayers, get tired of that stuff, right? It's constantly on our backs. We're constantly having to ask, being asked for more and more and more, and it's tough. When you go to the tax service and say, our inmates need a new jail. And it's easier for them to say, tough cookies.
Build a fence in Arizona.
Lock them up in a tent city. The only reassurance that we have on this is that hopefully, our property taxes will be cut, right? We'll get a break on property taxes. So the two tenths of a percent maybe won't be as much as it could have been, I guess, as big of a hurt as it could have been. We don't know if we're going to see a proper tax cut or not, we'll find out, I guess. I'm not holding my breath. So, I mean, I understand exactly what you're saying. I get so tired of my taxes going up to fund everything, but that's how government works, I guess, right? I don't know what the, I don't know what the alternative is.
Your government can't do anything unless you pay for it. Unless you pay for it. Depends on how much you pay.
Guys, I'm one of the commissioners. And you guys have no idea how much money we've saved already in nine months with our own crew. I don't believe the D home ought to be touched. I believe it ought to be opened back up just how it is. Put the pod on, put another Sally Port, the kitchen, keeps the heating separate, that's how you're going to save the money. I've studied this more than all of you. And I've went up on these buildings. I know how much we're saving. Guys, it was 900,000, the change of lights in the D home. You realize how much it cost us to change 660 lights in this building? Not 900,000. Nowhere near 900,000. I probably did more remodeling, building my own buildings, than anybody in this room. It's all about how you got, you've got to look at it, you've got to study it, you've got to use common sense, because this is all our monies. And we, and as far as the jail, be truthful, I could probably get 10 years out of it and spend 6 million. But I know, as well as I'm sitting in this chair, now when I was on the council, and we talked about building things, we got ate up, okay? So the bottom line, you have to ask yourself, and that's what I ask myself all the time, if we don't control the cost of this right now and build this pod, in four years, if they beat the commissioners, you guys will have a $300 million jail. Because it was already at 120, okay? And I, I mean, it's no different than 911 call, Ruff, 1.1 million to redo it, we fixed it for 60 grand. It's, it's, guys, you got, you got to trust us. We, me and Shane have studied this ever since we've been on this council. I was only on the council for four years. Guys, when you see how much money we've saved in a year, it's going to blow all you guys' minds. And that's because you got to use common sense. You got to use our own people. We don't have a maintenance crew, we have a construction crew.
Right. And I think that's kind of coming back to what Mr. Creach had said, it's more like us establishing what we want from them, and then we'll take control. And, yeah, you go to the D home and you fix what needs to be fixed over there, but you guys do that, you control it more as opposed to this construction manager.
And I believe Mr. McCourt is right, we have to raise the, because we're going to need that money, in regards if we build one, we don't build one, just to maintain what we got.
Commissioner, let me ask you, you bring up the $900,000 lights being maybe excessive. How do we ensure that the $60 million bid or $60 million price tag we heard yesterday doesn't include the same kind of excess? I mean, if it's, you see what I'm saying? If it's in the $900,000, is it in that $60 million bid too?
I think that's where you, you do just what that man said. You say, this is all we got, can you get there? Because if you're not, you're just wasting all of your time. We should be this long time ago before we put $2 billion in it.
Well, I'm going to comment to that. I think we've told them that. Here's what we're going to, here's the money we're going to give you, the authority to plan and design to, and that's what they've done. They've given us, it's not done yet, but this, what they're working on is a facility with that number in mind. Now, they're saying there's alternatives, or we're going to give you a presentation for it, you can decide, but we can't fit that alternative into that $60 million number you had right now. So we've told them, that's the number. And we're relying on their expertise to make sure they're doing the things that are appropriate and need to be done to get to that point. But there are things we would like that can't fit in there at this point.
Well, you say you can't.
Well, they're telling us they can't.
Right, but this is what I'm saying, it's no different than the 911 call center. Come on, guys. You got a $1.7 million bid to do that building. When you got done, you had 3 million in it, and we had a third of the building done.
But Chuck, I guess I'd say this to that. You can't go build that pod and do the things that they're going to build this project. You can't do that, I don't think.
I could if the federal government would let you.
Well, what I'm saying is they can let you, Randy, they won't let you, I guess is what I'm saying. So we've got to fit within that system.
It's just a prefab.
Now, there are things that you can do for us, you know, as commissioners, as far as what you do with your crew. But those are not, that doesn't encompass everything that needs to be done.
I understand what you're saying, Mr. McCourt, but this is what you guys ain't understanding. Guys, you got three men in 911. Before me and Shane left, they wanted another $4 million to finish that building, correct? That's what they told us, right, council? So you'd have $7 million in that building, right? We're going to finish that building for less than a million.
You didn't, I'm not disputing that, I appreciate that, but I'm saying that's irrelevant to this piece, though.
No, I agree, we need to raise this tax. I understand what you're saying, because you're going to need that money to wherever. And we'll have to battle this out, but I'm just saying, in my opinion, that D home shouldn't be touched, because when you remodel something nowadays, used to in old days, remodeling was cheaper. Nowadays, it's more expensive to build new.
I guess my point to this whole conversation, that part we can't even address tonight. You know, because we aren't going to make any decisions on what that project entails.
I understand that.
We don't know, we can talk about it and hash back and forth what we want to see, what we don't, but tonight, it didn't really matter.
What matters to me, to these council people, they realize what, we ran into being in this council.
I'm saying for the question tonight, it doesn't matter. It matters in total, yes. I'm saying for our question tonight, that piece really doesn't enter into what our decision is tonight. It's whether we want to have that money flow coming in yet or if we don't, is what it boils down. And we'll decide all those details as far as how it's used later.
Yeah, I know.
We wish it was now, we wish it had been at the same time.
I'm in agreement with Mr. McCourt, though. We have to do it, because we're going to need it one way or another.
Right. Yeah, unfortunately, yeah. And I hate to do that, but I would agree. I guess with all of this discussion, I guess I'll ask for a motion regarding this modifying local income tax rates.
I'm going to move that we initiate and adopt the point two. Was it called the Correctional Rehabilitation Facility Lit?
Yes.
Effective 1/1/26. And what order number do we have?
Three.
Number three, so be ordered number three, 2025.
Yep.
Now, obviously, I do that with reservation, I think we need to, to get that process, get the funding stream started, that's why I'm saying it. Don't know what it's going to end up being at this point, as far as the project, it isn't, this filing determined, but we have to have a revenue stream to do something.
And we will come back and discuss at a later date the approval for whatever project if we end up doing.
The way they indicated last night, it would be late December, early January, before they have the number for this project that they are going to present to us, that the commissioners will be coming to us with and so forth.
So we have a motion, do we have a second? All right, thank you, Mr. Caddell. Any further discussion regarding this?
I guess I'm certainly on the same page to kind of Mr. Brankle, as I definitely hate raising taxes. And I feel like with all of the federal rules and regulations, it raises the price and the cost of everything that we have to do. And while I would agree with Mr. Howell, that we're treating our prisoners with the highest regard, but there's all kinds of federal rules and regulations and state rules and regulations that we have to follow in order to do that, which runs up that cost. So it kind of starts really putting us in a corner.
Yeah, there are a lot of factors that make it less desirable than you'd like it to be.
Yeah.
We can't change those.
Yeah. And I'm certainly not there on a daily basis like the sheriff, having to make sure all these rules and regulations are followed, so.
Well, we've got the motion and a second, we've already had public comment. I don't know, anybody else might want to add anything? And I believe for this vote, that we need to do a roll call.
Sure. If you're ready. You ready?
I believe so. Mr. McCourt made the motion, we have a second by Mr. Caddell.
Brankle?
Aye.
Caddell?
Aye.
Hicks?
Aye.
Kitts?
Aye.
Lemming?
Aye.
McCourt?
Yes.
Scott?
Aye.
All right, that's an unanimous vote. Motion carries and I.
With that, the ordinance has to be submitted to the DLGF right away, so you guys will make sure that all gets signed and submitted.
You have the original, so.
Okay.
Plated in.
All right. And then we might jump back up on the agenda, Mr. Hicks?
Thank you, Jim. I was late in the discussion for this evening. I'm requesting the transfer from salaries to overtime in the amount of $30,000. We average about $10,000 a month in overtime. The $0.30 comes from the open positions that we've had.
Just, why are we still short? We have one opening, we onboarded one yesterday, she started to her first gen training, we onboarded another one on Monday, and she'll start later in that. So we have one of them. And we interviewed tonight with a little lady who has previous experience.
All right, Chair would entertain a motion regarding this transfer appropriations of $30,000 from salaries to overtime.
So will.
All right, thank you, Mr. Scott.
Second, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Mr. Brankle. We have a motion, and we have a second. Any other discussion among the council? Anything from the public regarding that? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. And those who oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, Jim, and thank you for all your hard work on the budgets and the taxes and stuff. I know it's not even sitting in those chairs, having to make hard decisions, but thank you for all the hard work you do. I truly appreciate it.
Thank you, and all of your staff, obviously, every day, 24/7, putting in for the public. Thank you. Thank you. Old business that I have here is adoption of 2026 budgets.
Do you want to handle the contract with the union first?
Yes, we can certainly do that. My agenda, I didn't get an updated one, I didn't know if it was on there.
It's not on there, we just had that tonight.
Okay, yeah, we've got it added, Mr. Glitfield, everything's good to go on that?
I'd like you to address that issue real quick.
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
And speaking with Mr. McCourt, and then Mr. Kitts and Mr. Scott, the committee reached an agreement with the union and the sheriff, and I think it's also a discussed in your meeting, which needs formalized through the passage of the agreement signing the contract. I went through, Mr. McCourt suggested was an excellent idea, since I did not actually draft the contract, I went through the old one, line by line, to make sure everything was in order with the new one that was presented. The new one, the draftee had taken the amendments and moved them into the new contract, so they're no longer amendments, they're part of the new contract. So in doing that, I, there was just a couple of changes that were not discussed, but I believe those were just typos, fixing typos in the old agreement. So it looks like everything is in order with the negotiations that the committee had, and then ultimately, what you generally discussed in the executive session. So it looks like this contract, assuming you still have the same stance you had based on the information you received, which nothing has changed, looks like this contract's ready for approval from the county council.
We might just note those three changes, I believe there are three. All union members have a $1,000 raise on their base pay. The longevity calculation has changed from a base year of 2021 to 2025. The formula is the same, just the base year salaries changed from '21 to '25. And then the other item is it's a three-year contract, so it goes through December 31 of '28. The only opener being salaries. So salaries will be open for '26 and '27, oh, '27 and '28, actually.
We get negotiation, no later that June 1.
July 1, I think, yes, it's July 1. Yes, July 1, I think, or before July 1. So those are the changes, we all agreed to those as we met in executive session, and the committee did agree to that as well, so.
We did.
Absolutely.
At this time, I would entertain a motion then regarding approval of the contract.
So we will.
All right, thank you, Mr. McCourt. Do we have a second? Sorry, a second. Thank you, Mr. Scott. Any questions or comments from the council?
I mean, just so I understand your question, you said it is open for negotiations for salaries in '27 and '28.
Yeah, each year, it'll be an opener for salaries for the next year. So right now, it's a three-year contract except for salaries. You might say, because, so next summer, we'll open negotiations for '27 salaries, and the summer of '28, it'll, as it stands now, summer of '28, we'd open up for salaries for '28, or for '20, I'm sorry, I didn't see, we'd open up for '20, and '26, open up for '27, '27 and '28. Which is, I mean, that's not unusual.
Yep. He was talking to the sheriff, because I didn't know if the sheriff had any comment or anything regarding the contract. I didn't know, Sheriff, if you had any comment regarding the contract or anything, negotiations?
Yeah, I just want to thank you, thank the council and the committee for hearing our guys out. And I know it's a tough time for everybody with Senator Vila, not knowing what that's going to bring to the county. And I know from talking to the president of the union, they were happy that you guys were, you know, attentive to what they were saying, and that you guys were at least able to give them a little bit of something with all the NMS out there. So thank you, and it was a privilege to work with you guys on that.
Well, thank you. I know they have a tough job to do each and every day, never know what's going to happen around the next corner. And like you've said before, they're running in when others are running out, so, yeah. All right, so we have a first and a second. I guess anything from the public, I guess I didn't leave that open either. So if anybody had any comment? Hearing none, all in favor, approval of the contract, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Mr. President, the next step will be, Sheriff Garcia told me he would get the original, he'll get it to the auditor's office, I'm sure she'll contact you for your signature, and then she'll keep the original and the decedent copies.
Okay, very good.[1777.16] Very good. Thank you. Thank you. And old business, adoption of the 2026 budgets. This would be resolution 3, 2025. In order to approve this, did everybody get a copy of this or no?
You have the point four that you have a copy of? I don't think we all have copies of that, do we?
Everybody has a copy of this.
Do I have one?
It's behind the lit sheet.
Yeah, it was behind the...
Just before we actually adopt, we have one other item to address, I think.
Yes, sir.
We didn't do on October 1st, when we met, we were issued.
Yes.
It's regarding the election board. The personnel services portion of that department's budget, we have not approved, because it had some personnel items in, and of course, non-personal too. But bottom line is, do they have copies of this?
Yes, they do.
Okay, so there should be a copy at your table. I guess what I'd like for us to do is to, I guess, entertain a motion or approve the personnel services part of that budget. We already did the supplies and other services, we just haven't officially approved the personnel services, or personal services portion. So we ought to do that before we get to the whole budget approval.
All right, so you're looking for a motion for approval of the election board personnel services for 2026?
Yes.
All right.
That totals 115,872, that incorporates the pay that we've approved, and the other categories are in there. That, that budget has some changes because it's going to be a different budget cycle in '26 than it was in '25, so some things, you know, moved because of that.
So do we have a motion to approve that 2026 budget of 115,872?
Mr. President, I would move that we approve it as read by the...
All right. Thank you, Mr. Brankle. Do we have a second?
A second.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hicks. Any questions or discussion among the council? Anything from the public? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. So that's approved?
Just a side note, too, we don't, aside, I don't think, but you, I think you probably all saw emails from the clerk regarding voting machines and being prepared for future need there, so I just wanted to plant the seed, we, we probably ought to, you know, have that in mind at some point, but I'm not sure how long we currently have this to last, but obviously, that is a concern sometimes, so, just a, just a heads up there.
It is, and maybe, maybe we'll have a little bit clearer picture of what the state wants to do with our funding next year.
At present times, yeah.
If we can squeeze some money into that fund.
Anyway, so it was a good point for her to point that out to us.
It was. It was. You are correct. Now, I guess we have adoption of the 2026 budgets, which would include everything. This would be ordinance 3, 0, 3-2, 025.
We just did, we just did 3 on that.
That was an ordinance, this is a resolution.
Okay, it's a resolution, okay, very good. All right. The guy says, it has both words on there.
Yes. Yeah, this is kind of both, yeah.
True.
The, the form you have, that is the, the official, the budgets that the DLGF reviews, you know, through our, after our approval process locally. So, you know, we ought to, we need to approve that, and if we approve that, we have to all sign off on this form tonight for those funds. But the approval process also entails, you know, a lot of other funds, you know, we went through a lot of funds through that budget hearing process, and I think Angie gave you a list of all those this evening at your table. So the motion we would make, hopefully, whatever that is, we would incorporate the approval of all the funds listed on the form, that's the DLGF form for the, what are the eight funds listed? General Fund, 2015 reassessment, debt service, highway, local road and street, Cuban Bridge, health, Cuban capital development, economic development. Those funds are the formal ones that we have to sign off on with state, but we also need to approve all the other, the list of funds that's in this package. So if you're ready for motion on main one?
Absolutely.
I, I would agree that we approve all the budgets that we have gone through in the public hearing process and, and made our approvals through that process as listed on these documents. We've got the resolution number 3-2025, the official form that the state has for those funds, as well as all the other funds we approved on a local basis. I won't read them all, but there's a bunch, obviously. So my motion would incorporate all those funds, and I will note this, too, on the, on the page that has the state list that we need to officially sign off on. You'll notice the Cuban capital development fund is on there, and that is a reduced amount from what we had advertised, or we, we talked about the possibility going to .0333 on the rate. Commissioners allowed that with their action in the spring. We decided not to, we decided to keep it at what it was. Now, you'll see the rate on the right-hand side is .0225. That will actually become .0175 when it's all said and done, but I just want you to know it's on here higher than what it will become, and all these are higher than what it will become, and CCD is one of those that kind of stands out, because we can only go up from the point that the ordinance that the commissioners adopted in the spring allowed, they would allow .0333. By putting it down to .0225, it would allow us to 0225, but my, my point would be, when they come back to us with the, after the DLGF reviews it, if they still have 0225 on it, we will ask them to lower that to .0175, which is where we want it to be based on what current year is. Okay, the levy will be increased over last year, probably if our AD goes up, but the rate, we should keep it the same, it'll be the same when, after we address it with them after their approval process. So I just wanted to point that out, so you won't be surprised later when that comes up.
Yes.
Okay? So anyway, my motion is to approve all those as presented.
All right. Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
All right, thank you, Mr. Scott. Any questions or comments among the council? Anything from the public? I guess this is one where we actually didn't raise taxes, and we had the opportunity to do so in the community of capital development.
Right.
Victory for the taxpayers there. Hearing nothing from the public, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Thank you.
Make sure you sign that form tonight before you leave.
Yes.
They have to have that signed.
We'll have to do that. Next item on our agenda would be any, any reports. I would say you, all, all of us took part in the, except Mr. Caddell, I guess, in the building projects discussion for the new potential jail last night. Committee reported at the present time. Anybody else have any?
I can just report on the redevelopment, the commission that Frank and I set on on Monday, the first Monday of every month. Basically, we're in the process of getting some things set up and earmarked for that purpose. So take it to war to get some funds, we're at least looking at different grounds and trying to get those into the system.
Our one commissioner that's here, any comments from the commissioners?
No comment.
All right. Let's let that be duly noted.
Just tonight.
Yeah. Amazing. Anything else? For the good of the cause. All right, we're getting this one signed. If not, then we've got upcoming meeting date, regular meeting Wednesday, November 19th is our next meeting, and with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, thank you, Mr. Scott.